Good evening, everybody. I'm Michael Andrews, the current Chair of the Newton Planning Board. Welcome to our meeting tonight. Following tradition, I will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. So, anyone who would like to join me, please stand.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Amen.
Okay, and from administratively, we have a full quorum, and we have six members. Is that correct, Jim, this time, present?
Yes.
Between Zoom and in the room. So, in place of Mr. White, I will name Mr. Marchand as a voting member tonight. And with that, I will open up the first public hearing. First public hearing is a continuation of the Newton Planning Board's public hearing on adoption of new introduction, vision, and government and facilities chapters of the Newton Master Plan. Just an update for the folks who weren't here at our last meeting. We had public discussion on it. What came to light was there had been a minor change that wasn't updated on the town website. So, instead of voting to adopt it at that point, we continued it to this meeting. So, I will start by opening it up to the public if there is any further comments on the changes to the Newton Master Plan. Hearing none, thank you. I will also ask Ms. Collier, who is the head of the subcommittee, if she has anything to add, and if not, I will entertain a motion to adopt.
No, it's good to go.
Okay, thank you. Yes, and since you're the first one to speak, I get to tell everybody when you speak. I have to ask you because of, mainly because of IT stuff, that you approach the podium first, state your name, and then speak.
So, I haven't been to one of these sessions before. I don't really-
What is your name, please?
My name's Autumn Warnock.
Okay, thank you.
I live on Walnut Farm Road, and my backyard, literally, Puzzle Lane, is so close to my backyard.
Okay, I'm gonna stop you right there. I don't mean to be rude. This is, right now, is just on adopting chapters of the master plan.
Okay, and that's, I didn't know what this was for. I just wanted to be here to make the comment that I completely oppose any development or any modification.
Okay.
And I have lots of feedback on that, but since I didn't know what this was for other than what's stated in the letter, I think it's important to express-
Right, you will be able to speak when that item is on the agenda. We're not there yet.
Okay.
Thank you for your involvement, though. Okay. Okay, hearing no other public comments, could I have a motion to adopt those changes?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Second. When you're ready, Jim, please call the roll.
Mr. Andrews?
Aye.
Mr. Lavoy?
Aye.
Ms. Collier?
Aye.
Mr. Foote?
Aye.
Mr. Moran?
Aye.
Ms. White?
Aye.
And Mr. Marchand?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Okay, thank you. I will close the public hearing on the master plan at 7:05 and open the next one, a continuation of 125 Development, New Hampshire Corp. of Plastow, New Hampshire's request for a public hearing for a four-lot subdivision off Puzzle Lane in Newton, New Hampshire. The property is referenced as Tax Map 14, Block 1, Lot 27-3. Before I have you speak, sir, the main reason this was continued is there was a lack, it came to our attention that there was a few-
Butter notices.
Yes, butter notices that did not get completed. So, those have been completed. Before I have you speak, sir, I'm gonna, I like to do it this way. So, I'm gonna have Ms. Rowden, who is the Secret Rider of the Regional Planning Commission, to update us on any updates, any opinions.
Sure. I'm basically gonna go through the points that were in my original letter from July, just to update you on things that have changed. The first one is approval from Plastow. The town did receive correspondence from the town of Plastow and their attorney that they actually agree that they will also need to review this application and have it come before them. But they effectively requested that Newton take the lead on that action simply because the majority of the action is in Newton. The next item is about completeness in waivers. The application was deemed complete at the last hearing or the last meeting, and the two waivers requiring for high-intensity soils and test pits were granted, along with the discussion about fees that was also granted. So, the application is complete. You are under the 65-day clock with jurisdiction. We're at roughly day 27. Of the remaining items, my only recommendations are, besides the note regarding Plastow's approval still needing to be removed from the application and the granted waivers being noted on the plan, are just some of the standard application requirements that you have had and actually sort of minic the last approval when this came before you a few years ago after its application waiver lapsed. So, those are approval of all waivers and variances be listed on the recording pages, along with the dates granted, original stamps and signatures of all professionals who appear on the plan set, all boundaries to be set, a liability waiver being placed prior to the recording with the town of Newton per the subdivision regulations 8.2.4, and a recordable Mylar. One discussion point from the last meeting was whether the planning board wanted to have a note on the proposed Lot 27-7 stating that if building were to be sought, it would have to seek any necessary relief under Newton zoning at that time. Because as of right now, it is an unbuildable lot without receiving variances. That could change in the future if your regulations were to change.
Okay, so, having heard that, I do have to have you state your name.
Sure. My name is Barry Guyer. I'm with Jones Beach Engineers. And basically, I agree with Jen. We kind of, we went over this project last time, and you guys have seen it before that as well. So, I don't want to take a lot of time. We agree with any of the conditions as stated by Mrs. Rowden. And so, if you have any questions, we'll answer them. We did re notify all the abutters, make sure to double-check, triple-check to make sure we had them all. So, that should be taken care of. So, be happy to answer any questions you had.
Okay, for the board, are there any questions? Or, Jim, anytime if you have a comment?
I'm watching.
Oh, okay. Oh, for the, I had to, I was trying to have Zoom here so I could tell if somebody was raising their hand, but I was getting feedback, so. So, all the abutters have been notified at this point?
Yes, sir.
Other comments? Okay.
I guess I just, just for the public that wasn't here before, this is, and correct me if I'm wrong, is strictly for the subdivision to lot line adjustments, correct?
Correct.
It's four-lot subdivision of the 164-acre parcel.
Right, yeah, so it doesn't-
No buildings at this time, no roads.
No increase development. It's only taking what is there and putting some lines-
Absolutely.
-on the ground, which will then be heated.
And just to add to that, if any future development were sought to be, were to be sought, they would have to come back before the planning board with a new application, and any abutters would also have to be notified of those applications.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. I'm gonna open it up to the public now. And so, this is the public comment period only for this particular hearing, which is on the four-lot subdivision. Okay, thank you.
Nancy Kozlowski. Mr. McDonough's representatives keep speaking about his hardships if he isn't granted approvals and variances for this project so that he can go forward. I'd like to know why his residential neighbors should assume these hardships so that he can go forward. The residential neighbors did their due diligence and accepted the setbacks put forth in the zoning bylaws. Sorry, I'm nervous.
It's okay.
The residents relied upon all, upon the town of Newton, the planning board, and the zoning board of appeals to uphold these bylaws. Mr. McDonough knew, or should have known, the limits of the property he purchased. He should have known that there was a 200-foot structural setback plus a minimum 50-foot undisturbed natural buffer, one abutting, another zone, meaning light industrial, commercial, abutting residential. Knowing that, knowing that, he should have known that it would be impossible to develop the parcel in the manner he would like without variances, many variances. In fact, he would need variance for almost every lot he wants to develop. This is not a hardship. He was not forced to buy that land. He was not forced to propose overdevelopment to the property beyond its limits. It is, however, a hardship for the residential abutters who have abided by their 50-foot setbacks and relied on the zoning bylaws to keep industries out of their backyard. The residential neighbors have had to put up with more buildings allowed in parcels that zoning would not permit without variances. Without the variances, approvals would not have been allowed. We have to put up with noise problems, silt problems coming from Mr. McDonough's property into our other properties, lighting issues, well contamination, pollution problems from trucks idling overnight in parking lots adjacent to homes, and the hardships of the unknown, not knowing what will happen next. I'm asking the board to uphold the zoning bylaws and protect the residents who rely on them. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'll just ask her if she has a copy of that. I'll include it.
Oh, do you have a written copy of your statement? If you would like, if you could submit it, and it'll be easier than him trying to transcribe from the audio. Thank you very much, ma'am. Anybody else would like to speak on this? And again, this is just the four-lot subdivision. There is no increased building. And I completely hear everything you said, ma'am. This board does not deal with variances, and, you know, so, but I definitely understand your concern. Is there anybody else? Would you like to speak? And feel free. If it's about the next one, please hold it until the- That's the condominium conversion?
Yes.
Okay. Any other comments from the public? Okay, at this time, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the board. Having heard from the public, are there any further questions, comments, whether it's for the applicant, for Ms. Rowden? Okay, hearing none. What we have on the table right now is a completed application. We've taken jurisdiction. I think we have a good list of conditions that are required. And with that, I would entertain a motion to approve with the conditions. I'm not gonna state them all. I think Ms. Rowden stated them. If you would like to read them, Jim, that would help. Do you have them, or?
Is everything from the original?
It is. Jen, could you-
Do you want me to restate what I said before?
Yes, if you could restate the conditions for this-
So, these are my suggestions, that the note regarding approval from Plastow be removed, and that a condition be that approval from the town of Plastow or a letter of their correspondence that they, that knows such approval is necessary be received.
And that has to be on the recordable plan?
Yes. That all approved waivers and variances be listed on the recording page, along with the dates granted. That original stamps and signatures of all professionals who appear on the plan set. That all bounds be set. A liability in place, be in place prior to recording with the town of Newton per subdivision regulations 8.2.4. A recordable Mylar. And then finally, as a note on the plan, that Lot 27-7 will require necessary waivers at the time it is proposed to be developed. Or if, I'm sorry, if necessary, variances will need to be received for it to be developed. Because in the future, a variance may not be necessary, but under your current zoning, it would be.
And Jen, that can't be for at least three years, correct?
There is no time limit. If the zoning were to change next year, say it went down to a 10-foot setback.
Wasn't one of these properties supposed to be three years before they could come back to the board to do anything with it? When we discussed that last time?
Oh, you're thinking of the minor site plan requirements? That doesn't apply in this case.
Okay.
So, if the zoning were to change, then they may not have to get a variance to build on Lot 27-7. But under your current zoning, they would.
Okay. Okay, so I heard the note being removed, and then there was 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, essentially seven conditions, including the note about Lot 27-7. Okay. Do you have those?
Yes. What I will do is I will take, it's basically the same as the last one, with certain additions, and I will just redo that. They're all mostly conditions consequent, not conditions precedent.
Right, okay, thank you. Okay, having that, I will entertain a motion to approve with said conditions.
Mr. Chair, this is Annie.
Okay.
So, move.
Okay, with said conditions, okay. Second, who said second?
Larry.
Larry, okay. Any further discussion, Larry said second. Mr. Foote, any further discussion? Okay, Jim, call the roll, please.
Mr. Andrews?
Aye.
Mr. Lavoy?
Aye.
Ms. Collier?
Aye.
Mr. Foote?
Aye.
Mr. Moran?
Aye.
Ms. White?
Aye.
And Mr. Marchand?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Okay, thank you. I will close the, that hearing at 7:19.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for coming tonight.
Okay, next item on the agenda. I will open the public hearing on a continuation of 125 Development, New Hampshire Corp. of Plastow, New Hampshire's request for a public hearing for a six-unit condominium, condominium conversion off Puzzle Lane in Newton, New Hampshire. The property is referenced as Tax Map 14, Block 1, Lot 27-4. And as before, I will start off with Ms. Rowden giving us an update.
Sure. You did receive an updated plan set a few weeks ago, mainly correcting some of the items that were not in compliance with your condominium conversion ordinance. I will point out that they do have to fully comply with your zoning ordinance because if they wanted any sort of relief, they would have to go to Superior Court. It does appear that the application at this time is complete. The one item, and you may have noted it in my letter, that I do think the planning board may wish to discuss is whether the floor plans that were submitted are sufficient for your purpose. Under the State Condominium Act, that's RSA 365B, there is a definition of what a floor plan is. Your zoning ordinance does not specifically cite that. So, it is not a definition you have to use, but it is one that you could choose to follow. It does state that all of the units actually, the big difference, have identifying numbers on each unit. And the main reason for that is that so there wouldn't be any further resubdivision. So, you know, Unit 1 would stay Unit 1. It wouldn't become Unit 1A and 1B. That's sort of the one thing that seems to be missing from the floor plan. That would be a relatively easy thing to add to the plan set. The quick other items, just as a follow, that you should have Town Council review the condominium documents. I think Jim can probably speak to whether your Town Council has been able to do that, just to ensure basically that there's responsibility for maintenance operation, protecting water and septic facilities, et cetera. The third item is ensuring that roadway liability waivers are put in place. This is with, in compliance with subdivision regulation 8.2.4. And then, item four, and this is specifically a recommendation that I had all of these earlier, but this one, because on the largest building, the middle unit is still under construction and does differ a little bit from the original approved site plan, after it is completed, to get an as-built plan. So, the town has on record exactly what is built on that larger building. It is a little bit different. My understanding is there may have been a little bit of alignment issues. An as-built would give you a definitive, this is what is on the land, but it wouldn't stop the condominium conversion. It would be an after approval, and you could put a time limit, like within a year of the building's completion or the occupancy permit being granted, that an as-built be supplied to the town. So, it wouldn't hold anybody up, but it would also get the town an official record of what is actually on the ground there. So, those are my comments.
Jim, could you, before I hand it over to you, were the updated condominium documents, were they reviewed by Town Council? Yet.
They were sent once. We got something back, and I called, and he still hasn't written his response.
Okay, so we're still waiting for that. Okay. So, we have not taken jurisdiction yet?
No.
Okay. So, hearing that, we, your opinion is it's a completed application?
Yes, pending that the planning board agrees that the floor plans are sufficient. But you could still add the unit numbers as a condition of an approval. That's fairly minor.
Jumping around a little bit here, but I'm trying to save time. Were you able to, did you get a copy of the, our Land Use Attorney's opinion letter?
No.
Okay.
When was that receipt that I-
I got it. It doesn't really change it. I'm just gonna, because we had a discussion last time about floor plans, and so I wanted to get straight that I knew what we needed to ask for. Okay. Before you get up, so, basically, I'm just gonna paraphrase for you for the part that affects here. "The floor plans itself show the location and dimensions of the vertical boundaries of each unit." These do. "And the units or portions thereof thus depicted shall bear their identifying numbers." They do not at that point, at, right now. So, that's what Ms. Rowden was saying when, the reason I'm giving you this is so you actually know what we were talking about.
I understand that, but again, I want to say that there's no units being added at this point. It is exactly like how it is, so.
Right, well, I could just-
Because we just went through this with 9111 with New Hampshire and-
Yes, this is, this is straight out of the condominium, the state condominium definition.
I understand that.
All you would have to do is, on the, on Sheet 6, on the larger building-
Right.
Right now, all I see is building number 9-15 at the top, 9-15 at the bottom.
Right.
What the RSA calls for is, like these other buildings, you have Building 3, Building 7. We just have to have these three units-
Building 9 is A, B, and C, correct?
A number, or a-
They have been carrying it as a letter.
Okay.
Yeah.
I don't think that that's-
Yeah, I don't think it matters. Identifying, well-
There are already-
It says identifying numbers on, in the RSA.
Yeah. Which has already been okay with fire and shanty, and with John, our chief.
Well, that's great. I'm just trying to help you understand what the-
I understand what you want. We had this discussion last time I was here, and I know B, 9B, that there's no interior in it yet because we don't have a tenant.
Yeah, we don't need that.
Right.
The first part of this, "The floor plans shall show the location and dimensions of the vertical boundaries of each unit." That's it. So, all you gotta do, you know, it's like, you currently do that. Vertical boundaries, that's a vertical boundary, that wall.
Right, vertical boundaries, right.
That's a vertical boundary.
Right.
So, that meets that part, and then what it's saying is these need numbers. Saying that-
Yeah, so this is, so how this is now, this is A, B, and this is C.
Okay.
That's all it is. This is one tenant, one tenant, one tenant.
Okay, so that will have to be on the plan.
Okay.
So, that's where we're, that's where, okay, so we just got at least that.
We're also missing the dimensions on B, I guess.
On B?
Okay.
Is it, unless it's on a different sheet? Right, it's 150 by 200. Okay, gotcha.
Okay. So, we went beyond a little bit, we'd like to do right now. So, hearing what we heard, I'm willing to entertain a motion to accept this application as complete and take jurisdiction, and then we'll commence the discussion after that. Is there any comment on that? And if not, can I have a motion?
I'll second it. Are you making a motion, or you-
I can't make a motion.
I'll make a motion. You want to second?
Sure, okay. And call the roll, please, Jim.
Mr. Andrews?
Aye.
Mr. Lavoy?
Aye.
Ms. Collier?
Aye.
Mr. Foote?
Aye.
Mr. Moran?
Aye.
Ms. White?
Aye.
And Mr. Marchand?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Okay, thank you. So, we've accepted jurisdiction. Now, Ms. Rowden, do you have anything else to add from what you're already said?
I do not.
Okay. Mr. Wagner, I'll give you the podium now to, if you have anything else. Basically, because we never were able to go through your description, so the description is basically for the public and for the record.
Right. Steven's our engineer on this part, so if you would like to say something, Steven, please come out and talk, and just, I know the product too well, but I know what you need, so.
Okay.
But I will get you an ass though. We have certified foundation plans already, and certified property.
I'm Stephen Casey, and I'll take any questions. How about you present, see, we never did this last time because we figured out we didn't have a complete application, so we never took jurisdiction. So, what I need from you is a description of the proposed project.
Oh, okay.
For the record.
Yes, Lot 27-4, Puzzle Lane. We're taking the lot and dividing it into six condominium units. It's pretty straightforward. There's no, there's gonna be no further development. And what is presently located on the lot for improvements is gonna stay that way. And that's, that's pretty much it.
Okay. All right, well, I'm gonna have to add some things then, just for the public. Condominium conversion is not a subdivision. It doesn't create any new buildable lots. And the condominium conversion RSA, the way the RSA is, is no variances, waivers can be, variances, is it waivers also? Basically, can be granted. So, there are none being applied. So, there are none being applied for or being granted with the condominium. They would have to go to the Superior Court.
There's a waiver request, it's not, it doesn't have to do with the condominium ordinance, but the board should take that up at some point.
All right, you're gonna have to remind me where that is. That's just a clarification, because I don't want to get this confused with a subdivision and more building going on. It's a, it's, a condominium conversion is a very distinct part of the RSA, part of the zoning, and it's, they gotta meet what it is, and that's it. So, do you want to add to that?
I'm sure. It's not a subdivision of land, it's a subdivision of property. So, the buildings can have different ownerships, but it's no additional building going on.
Thank you. Okay, while we have Speaker up, are there any questions from the board at this time?
So, essentially, what they're doing is they're just taking, like some people would take a house, and they make condos if it was like a two-family or a three-family, is what they're doing with these buildings.
Correct, they're commercial condo units.
Right.
There's currently four buildings. Three of the buildings are just being separated as buildings. And then, the fourth building is being divided, I guess we'd say vertically, because it's a one-story, into three condominium units that then could be bought and sold separately. And that's just a clarification for...
Is that the Turner and the Sunny and the other one?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, then I'm gonna open it for the public for any public comments, discussions, questions. Please keep it to this particular hearing as best you can.
Again, my name's Autumn Warnock. I've lived in Newton for 12 years. This is the first time I've attended one of these meetings. And I can see that it's really easy for you guys to listen, to talk logistics, make decisions based on logistics. But I ask that you imagine, you imagine that this is your backyard. And as she had previously explained, whether it's subdivisions, new building, or whatever is going on, just imagine that you have strangers coming to your area that didn't exist before, that you have constant disturbance from 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., Monday through Saturday. This morning at 7:00 o'clock, I could hear people, sounded like it was in my backyard, yelling, playing music. This goes on nonstop all day long, where a few years ago, and it's been going on for years, this was just a farm lane in my backyard. And now, it continues to be commercialized and developed. I feel like it threatens our neighborhood, it devalues our property. And I don't know if this is the appropriate form to present that, but I think enough is enough. And we need to stop introducing stuff to our neighborhood that residents don't want. That's like, there's so much, I mean, I could go on and on, but it's, to say that it's, I feel like it's a threat is an understatement. I don't want more in my backyard. So, that's all.
Thank you very much, and thank you for stepping up and voicing your concerns.
Okay, so I'm not gonna read this, Nancy Kozlosky, again. I have a question. So, when Mr. McDonough was granted variances and permits for the big building on Lot 27-4, there were conditions. Now, when he, if he's granted the condo conversion, do those conditions move forward into the conversion?
Yes. Great, if you want to be...
The answer to that is yes, but a good practice of any planning board is to ensure that that gets carried through, is to also look at the conditions of that site plan approval of the big building, and also restate them in any addition, any future approval, just so that it continues to be clear that those are carried forward.
Okay, so I read the condo docs. And Mr. McDonough is proposing that rooms be leased or rented within each individual unit. They are supposed to be one business in each unit. He's not supposed to be able to subdivide within, and nobody knows out here. Now, I understand he's not building another building, but in his condo docs, he is proposing to subdivide the inside of the buildings by lease. There were also restrictions on overnight parking in his, and idling. In his road maintenance agreement, Number 5, says parking for vehicles, limited period of time, not to exceed 12 hours, which exceeds the limit of the conditions for the permit. In his condominium docs, Article 2, 5B, states, "Such parking spaces may, in the discretion of the board directed, be used for overnight parking." No mention that no idling is allowed, and no overnight parking is allowed. And again, in Article 2, Number 6D, he states the same thing. So, I'm just saying his condo docs don't match the restrictions imposed by Newton. And if they don't match, he should not get approval for this. In fact, I don't think you should have taken jurisdiction without having a legal opinion on the documents matching the restrictions that were imposed by the Planning Board. Just my opinion. Okay.
Very well received, thank you very much.
Questions, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, go ahead.
So, I just want to act on her question on subdividing Sunnys. It's not gonna subdivide inside, correct?
We're not subdividing any of the buildings anymore than what's being proposed. Building 3 has always had three units in it. Building 5 has always been one unit. Building 7 has always been two units. And Building 9 is three units. There will be no more subdividing of the buildings or, it's basically, it's going skin to skin on each building, and they will remain exactly how they are. There will be no visual difference then, from what you're looking at today.
And as far as the idling trucks?
The trucks and the parking, I mean, I keep hearing the complaint, there is no parking overnight, there is no overnight parking. So, legal by commercial carriers that they cannot idle nationally, can't idle in the park, they don't. People parking, long-term parking, there is none. There's construction equipment, you know, you might consider being long-term parking, but it's only during construction. And for everybody that listened, we're 60 days away from being complete in 27-4, the whole parcel. And that will be the end of it. And then, as far as not wall, not firm, the noise, the complaints, obviously, there's a lot of noise, it's been a lot. Those are some big buildings. And, but again, I'm trying to work with everybody. We're working with lighting, shading, everything, to make everybody happy. So, they kind of sit there right now, very, the tenants are coming to be there and that are there now, they make no noise.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So, you, just, so most of the noise, at least what I'm hearing you say is, has been affiliated with the construction?
All of it.
Okay.
And of course, that's no problem, small removal. We have removed all backup beepers, and there's no more flashing lights, just to work with the people in Sergeant Woods. I mean, they speak, a lot of them speak to me weekly, because they all have my number, so. So, we try to do our best to be good neighbor. Thank you.
Okay.
So, I can quote from the condo docs about overnight parking? And I can quote from the condo docs about allowing the individual condo owners to subdivide their units to leased portions or rooms to others. I don't think that that matches what he just said. And I will say that the noise is not a problem with the construction. Everybody understands construction noise. The problem come, or at least they should. The problem comes from the automotive shop on Sunday afternoons, when they shouldn't even be there, revving their engines and using the, I forget the name of the tool, but...
Dino.
Okay. Using that. And there is problems currently with trucks idling overnight in the property that used to be held by Ravensburger. So, I'm gonna disagree with what he said and what the condo documents actually say and can be quoted.
Okay, thank you.
Who's in Ravensburger now? It's empty, right?
Just, for, what I would like on the condo docs, and because we haven't got the legal opinion back from the town attorney yet, is the condo docs do need to comply with current site plan, what the town is required. Do you agree with that, Jen?
Yes, I will say the one aspect that probably won't be able to change is you, as a property owner of a condo unit, they would have the legal ability to, say they have three offices and they want to have a contract with someone to lease one of those offices, it has to still be in compliance with the site plan regulations. But that would not be prohibited under any town regulations.
Yeah, because it won't change the impact, the buildings.
Correct, I mean, it would have to be the same use, the same function, but they could legally lease to someone else.
So, I agree with what you're saying. But unfortunately, the way that the buildings are constructed, with the fire sprinkler systems are in it, it would be cost prohibitive to split them up again. It would be, the system that's designed there and approved could not take any more weight from additional splitting up the units. It would be, it would be a financial disaster trying to reset the whole system as it is. You gotta remember, we have a 66,000-gallon Cistern on site. So, like, you know, it has to have a percentage of overage, but it would just be physically never gonna happen. I don't see how, financially, it just doesn't make any sense.
Okay, so I'm hearing what you're saying. I guess my question is, if the condo docs are telling future owners...
Right.
That they can sublease, I guess is what we're talking about, but, how does that line up with what you're telling me?
I don't know how they would.
Then why is it in the condo docs?
I'm not sure, because I didn't write them, but I'm just trying to make sense of what's being said, but I'm trying to, lawyers are lawyers, they write stuff. I don't know if that's a boilerplate or not. But what I'm trying to say is that to split those buildings would be really, really difficult. Actually, one was split, 9C, where Sunny's is today, and we put it back as one, because it doesn't make any sense dollars for dollars. And we were talking about, you know, a fire extinguisher system well north of 1,005, as it sits. And if you touch it, it's a startover, so I don't see it happening. That's why I feel confident it will remain the way it is. Okay?
Thank you. One, for, then I want other people to please step in. I don't want to be talking all the time. Where would, how much change would have to happen before a change of use would have to be applied for? Because I understand the public's concern. I hear what you're saying, Mr. Wagner. Where would the change have to happen? And to what extent were then a actual, where the owner would have to come to either this board, excuse me, or another board for whether it's a change of use permit or something like that?
They would be the same threshold you use for every other business or facility in town. So, if, I don't know, you...
I'm asking these questions for the...
Yeah, so if where Sunny's is right now, that they've gotten an approval for, if that changed to a doggy daycare or something completely dissimilar, they would have to come in for an approval from the Planning Board. If it changed to the exact same type of business, same restrictions, but a new owner, or it's leased by Sunny's for that exact same business, just a different name, that would not have to come to the Planning Board.
Okay. All right, thank you. Any other? Okay, ma'am.
So, Mr. McDonough was granted a permit for one occupant 90,000-square-foot building. He then applied to change the permit to more occupants in a split-up building. The individual residence homeowners in Sergeant Woods were never individually noticed of that change, nor were they individually noticed about the condominium conversion. So, anytime this comes up, we as a butters would like to be individually noticed, just like Plastow wanted to be individually noticed.
I'm gonna let Ms. Rowden answer, because there's a specific legal aspect here.
So, a butters in a facility like Sergeant Woods, the homeowners association is actually notified. And then, the units that are immediately adjacent, for any, any application, should be notified.
Immediately adjacent.
I honestly can't speak to the individual...
So, I will say that I was individually noticed for the other project that was up tonight.
For the subdivision.
For the subdivision, which I am not directly a direct butter, so don't understand that.
Okay, I will say, but for the splitting of the building from 1,90,000 square foot to three individual, as long as there was not a change of use...
Okay.
That was allowed to happen, it was under the same ownership. The condominium conversion is a subdividing that building's property. That does have to be noticed, and it comes before the Planning Board. The, just making a large building into three units does not have to, as long as it's all the same use.
Okay, but I should have been individually noticed for the condominium conversion, correct? Or did I misunderstand?
You should have been, yes.
Okay, so in the future, we would like to be individually noticed about anything that comes up that is appropriate for noticing.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, would you, would you remind speakers to speak into the microphone, please?
Oh, yes, sorry, forgot you were out there in the ether.
Thank you.
Sure.
So, 9A, B, and C is one big giant building, as we all know. As we build for, we get a building permit to make a shell. Then we come back to the building department for whatever section we build out in the thing, we ask, we again, get a building permit again. So, what we do is, once the shell and the site plan is completed by you guys, how the internals of the buildings, we have split according to what the customers, we get. That's basically how it's worked. So, what I'm saying is, as each permit progresses, each part of the building has been, you know, permitted, you know, foundation steel, or, you know, all the bits and pieces of it. And after that's complete, whoever the tenant is comes in, and if they do a tenant fit up for the building, then that's a different permit. And if the business comes in, like Jen said, they have to see you for every, every item all the way of all of them. So, there wouldn't be a tenant in any of those buildings that had not seen you. They have to come before you, because that's the rules. All right?
Thank you. Did you have something to, to, okay. Yes, sir.
Yeah, just one more question. I don't know if this, Larry Cochran.
Thank you.
I got a question on things that, I know it looks like they're pretty close to completion. Now, originally, they were supposed to be planting trees under berms. Is this a place to ask for that now? Are they gonna be doing that? It was under zoning back in 2013.
If it was part of the original conditions of the original site plan, then it still is valid and still required.
So...
And it carries forward...
Who's gonna enforce that?
That comes down to...
Do I have to wait and see if they're already moved in? Do I have to wait and see if they're already moved in?
Code enforcement, billing inspector, code enforcement is...
You know, we have no problem stating that.
Thank you.
What was it?
I don't know.
I think that was Coleman.
Okay, you will do that.
Oh, okay.
Landscaping comes at the end, and Mike McNally oversees it, proves it, Shox overlooks it.
Okay.
Again, the microphone needs to be used, please.
What Mr. Wagner just said was that, once the construction is complete, then all the landscaping will be completed. And I just reiterated that, because that has been a concern of a lot of the concerns we've heard, that, I think what you're saying, sir, is that some of the required landscaping initially was not, or has not been completed. Go ahead.
I know, the landscaped berm was specifically a condition of one of the variances granted in around...
The zoning board, yep.
Around 2013, 2012.
2013, yep.
So that would need to be part of the final completion of the site plan, so I understand it may not have occurred yet, but yes, the final plans will have to be put in.
And that is still valid by the site plan, the original site plan?
Yes.
And these, like, this condo does not change that.
No.
What we will do is, of course, refer in any approvals, if we reach that, to the original site plan for any of those conditions.
I know you were talking, you know, the conversion there, I knew this may not be that, but I wanted to follow up.
The public doesn't have a lot of opportunities to express their concerns in general for a lot of this stuff, so, thank you.
We'll take care of it.
My name is Judy Mazzaglia, and I do have some questions about this condo development. Are there tenants in there now?
Yes, there was a...
So you, you plant...
Ma'am, please address the questions to me, and then we'll...
I can move this down.
Thank you.
There are tenants in there now?
Yes.
Are there, I'm assuming if it's a con, it's divided into condos, they're going to either sell them or rent them?
Normally, under, why one would undertake a condo conversion would be, so then if they, the owner that owns it all right now, if they so choose, they can sell individual condo units. We tend to think of condos as housing units a lot.
But these are commercial condos.
These are commercial, but the same, same laws and same aspects of it. So yes, the, the actual building or parts of building for this one could be sold to a new owner.
So we do not really know who the tenants are currently, if it's going to be divided?
Well, the current tenants may choose. Now, as we mentioned earlier, if a new tenant that is going to be doing something different was to come in, that, then that tenant or their representative would have to come to the board for a new hearing for a change of use.
Do any of these condos have garages?
Do they have garages?
You know, like for auto repair?
They have the existing structures that are there...
Okay.
At this point.
Well, I don't know what's there at the moment, that's why I was asking the question.
Yeah, we, from our standpoint, what is there currently is currently permitted and allowed, and if anything were to change, then they would have to come back to this board for a change of...
So there, there could be some more car repairs put into Puzzling?
Theoretically, yes, but that would have to come through this, and then certain things would apply.
Because the ones we have now are very disrespectful, I'll just add that right now. And I agree with the other people about the noise level and the dino tuners, and I'll be honest with you, I put in a complaint with code enforcement, and I haven't heard an answer yet, it's been three weeks.
I'm sorry to hear that.
Okay.
Questions from the board? Comments? Any further questions from the public?
This is, this is Annie, I have, I have a comment.
Okay, go ahead.
One is, I, I think every one of us feels the same way, that we're extremely empathetic towards the residents, we understand, you know, sometimes there are frustrations with these things, and it's really important for residents to understand that the zoning board is not, the planning board is not an enforcement agency. What we are is, we apply the zoning regulations to applications, we apply variances if given to those applications, we don't make up new variances, and we don't violate the zoning ordinances that are in effect, that are voted in. So, and we also don't enforce the conditions or give permits or anything like that, that's, that goes to the zoning enforcement. And if a resident's having difficulty getting a response from zoning enforcement, I suggest that you speak with your selectmen, and, because they're the zoning enforcement's officer, you know, boss. So, you know, I mean, I certainly would if I had that issue, and I'm really sorry you're having it.
Thank you, I understand that, and that's why I did put the complaint. Thank you.
Yeah.
There's no other comments. Jen, just, so where do we stand right now on, on this? We have it complete, the floor plan, we've talked about with, if a new sheet is with the numbers or somehow designating each individual unit as required by the IRS. Condominium documents are being reviewed by town council. We understand the roadway liability, that's already in the site plan, I believe, but 824 subdivision regulations, and then the as-built, which would be basically after construction.
So the one additional is if you wanted to state as a condition that all prior granted conditions on the approved site plan shall be carried forward?
Yes.
That sort of catches it all?
Yes, that's the one. My question for the, for the board, I'm not big on having numerous conditions of approval. However, I'd like some comments on whether what we just heard, do we have enough information to move forward with these as-conditions, or do we need to wait until we solidify some of these and have...
No, I think we have enough information, and the concern from the residents, it's not really these three buildings, it's, I think it's the little sport racing car, RTK. And I know they're working on that, as far as code enforcement, because I'm his liaison in the police department, that they do racing up, up and down Puzzling. So it's not these three buildings, I just don't want you guys confuse it with, there's actually two down there, RTK is next to this building, then there's one down by Halo, and they look like junkyards, and we are going to get on Coleman's, clean it up, because he is, he's the owner of those two, correct?
Correct.
Right, so we are working on it, it's not like where, I mean, I know it's not with the planning board, but the town's not ignoring it, it just takes time, and working with the police department, insurance day, and with the fire department, you know, and Coleman to either calm him down or kick him out, because they're leasing, right? They're paying rent.
Yeah, but an owner can't be kicked out, so in the condo conversion...
But it's not them, it's not them that's creating the problem.
Please use the microphone.
Not going to yell that again. I'm just saying that an owner cannot be kicked out, so if they pass and get their, whatever they get from you guys to move in, and they become a nuisance, they can't be kicked out because they own. So I'm concerned about, I know you can't subdivide, you're saying, but what the condo docs actually say is you can build a partition, so that the, just a little fake wall, and have somebody else in there. So I'm just saying, the noise is a problem now, and we don't want it to get any worse than it is by allowing documents that don't match conditions that were imposed by the planning board. That's all I'm saying.
Thank you. Ms. Rowden.
I just want to clarify that while the planning board can certainly have the condominium docs reviewed by town council and make sure that certain provisions are in there, the town does not enforce condo documents. It can, however, enforce its own site plan approvals and regulations and zoning. So if a, if a owner were to violate site plan regulations or town approvals, for that reason, they could actually, if they were causing a problem, be shut down or be told they need to stop whatever activity they are doing, outside of the condominium documents.
So we have recourse?
Yes, the same recourse you have with any planning board approval.
So we have recourse other than through the board of directors of the condominium association?
They are two separate legal avenues, yes.
Because I feel very insecure having to rely on the board of directors of the condominium association.
It does not supersede the town's authority at all.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I empathize with you, because I understand you feel like, you know, if we could do more, we, we would, but what the planning board can do is very limited by law.
I just want to thank you, because I understand that you are constrained by law. You can only do what the planning board can do, and sometimes we as residents who don't know those constraints on you, do say things that you can't help us with, but we have no place else to vent, so here we are.
And, thank you, you are being heard. I know sometimes it may not feel like it, but, okay.
Hello, Mike?
Hello.
Mike, this is Coleman McDonough.
Oh, yes, sir.
Um, Mike, I just wanted to say that on several occasions, and it still holds true, that I've given out my card, my business card with my cellphone, and even if it's at midnight, you call my cellphone, and I've given it, I think I've given it to Frank Cochran, I've given it to several people in, in the abutting subdivisions, and they can feel free to call me, I wouldn't want to be disturbed in my house. And if it's going on after hours, I can assure you that McDonough Construction does not start their trucks before 7 o'clock, I can assure you that none of the trucks idle or sit idling overnight. You brought up Ravensburg, there is nobody other than a roofing company that's replacing a new roof on Ravensburg, other than that, there has been zero vehicles in that parking lot. I just got a call this afternoon from the car company that's in Unit 7, and he asked me, he said, you know who has a blue Mustang? They just peeled out and, you know, did like 60 miles an hour, and we're going to get to the bottom of that tomorrow, who has that vehicle, but I'm going to tell you publicly that, and I've stated this several times...
Who was it there?
It's Mr. McDonough, Coleman McDonough. Okay, I'm not sure if he got caught up. Thank you, Mr. McDonough. I think what we're really all concerned is, we kind of bring it down to the good neighbor policy, and you, if you have his number and we heard it here, and somebody's making noise at 2:00 a.m., okay. What I'd like, comments on the board, is do we have enough to move forward at this time? And Ms. White, are you with us tonight?
Yes, I am.
I would love to hear any comments from you, I know you have a lot of institutional knowledge.
Well, the only thing I was concerned about is the fact that if the condo documents don't line up with what's in our ordinance, then I think we need to check over everything and make sure that they are correct before we go ahead and improve it.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Rowden, do we have, I know that they're completely separate, like we have no enforcement of the condo documents, so do we have, do we even have the authority to...
I do not believe so. If you do want to ensure that the condo docs perfectly line up with your site plan approval, I would also suggest you ask your town council if you even have the authority to, because that is not what is specified in your zoning ordinance about what your concerns about the condominium documents are, which are maintenance of all of the infrastructure and septic and well facilities, so...
Are we allowed to make a request that the applicant complies without directing?
Uh, there's not really a mechanism for enforcing a request.
I, in good faith.
So if that's the way the board may want to go, you would need to get revised condo documents.
I know there may be a, probably a fee associated with the review from council, but... Well, I'm more than willing to make sure that town council reviews to make sure that the condo documents are in line with, of course, local zoning ordinances and any applicable site plan and subsequent...
So could we make that a condition on the jurisdiction?
It could be a condition on approval. Again, I, I'm hesitant to have too many conditions that, you know, are out there. If it's, if it's something that's that important to the board, I'd rather have us get it prior to approval, so...
Your other option is you have accepted jurisdiction, you have 65 days if you want to request of the applicant that they have a condo docs revised to match the site plan requirements, that could be a request, and you could continue the application.
Mr. Chair, I have a question, this is Annie.
Go ahead.
There was something about how long Mr. Kelman has had those condo docs, could you review what that was, and that we haven't heard back from him?
Oh, the current review from the, the town attorney?
Yes.
Because we got, we got revised ones once, correct?
Right, after the last meeting, we received revised ones, they've been at the attorney's office for about two weeks. I will tell you that the attorney reviewed them for the water sewer, that aspect of liability, if the town not having to pick that up should something, they, it was not reviewed to see if the condo docs agree with our ordinance, I would probably have to do a listing for him of which ordinances the, the board would want him to review and bring it, and see that they are brought into compliance.
Yeah, this becomes a slippery slope, go ahead.
So just similar to what I said before, they are two different legal instruments, and honestly, whichever is the stricter is what applies, but the town only has control over what the town has control of, so if you, if your condition were to impose, you know, only hours of operation between noon and 2:00 p.m., that would be the restriction. It doesn't matter what the condo docs say, I'm not suggesting you're giving that as condition, but as an extreme example, it doesn't matter what the condo docs say.
Yeah.
So what you're saying is...
Whichever is stricter is what applies. If your site plan requirements and conditions are stricter, it doesn't matter what the condo docs say.
So we have no opinion on the condo docs, is basically what you're...
I mean, minus the town's liability of the water sewer maintenance, yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
And so if we put those restrictions in place for the hours and all that, if they needed to change, like Mike said earlier, they would... needed to change, like Mike said earlier, they would have to come before the board and request all of that.
Correct.
And all those conditions are already in place.
Right, in place, right.
This doesn't, yeah.
Well, this is Annie. That being the case, makes me feel much more comfortable that basically the stricter circumstances and conditions are what do legally apply. And so I feel more comfortable about that. I also feel that we have a very good town council who will do the things to protect the town. And I hope that the current owner, before he sells, will make sure that his documents match so that he doesn't end up with potential liability for, you know, having something that's not accurate. But I don't think that's our jurisdiction.
Okay, thank you.
One last thing, one last thing, Mike.
Okay, please keep it to a minimum.
Yeah, just Steve Casey, my surveyor, has informed me just the other day that he's got the ASBilt for 9B. So, and I know that some of Kelman's had the documents for a couple of months now, I think.
Okay. I, could you repeat? I could not understand what you said about he has what built for 9B?
ASBilt.
The ASBilt?
Oh, the ASBilt, okay.
Yes.
I heard something else and I...
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
So we can get that up to the town tomorrow.
Perfect.
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
This is Roger Hamel. I have a request.
Okay.
But you were speaking about a potential condition that all of the conditions of the site plan carry over.
Mm-hmm.
I would request that those conditions actually be enumerated in this approval, if there is one. So that they would be upfront, any of the outstanding conditions of the site plan be actually listed in your notice of decision for this application.
Thank you. That's what I had written down here for the note to myself. I'm not sure if that's what you were implying.
That was the intention, yes.
I feel comfortable with that. If we just, like Keith Rogers said, reiterate the existing and then the couple that you had put up.
Okay. Jim?
Two comments. Last time I spoke to council, they, he had an issue. He's, is hoping to see a copy, the condo docs. List, no name for the organization. He's not certain, and I suggested that they could send to Mr. Lockberg or Mr. Casey a comment. I was not included, so I don't know if anything transpired. But the condo docs, while they are complete in what they need to say about the water and sewer and maintenance, they are incomplete. And I believe he just feels uncomfortable trying to give a clean letter on a document that is, has no title for the condo association, has no information. So I think that may be something.
Okay.
It's on my schedule for Thursday.
So the current condo docs that the attorney has are, they're a long way from being recordable, is what I'm hearing.
Exactly.
Okay.
My second comment is that if the board wishes, I can pull all the notices of decision for the various buildings on this and give them a succinct list of all the conditions precedent and conditions consequent that we have.
Yeah. And that was my understanding when we talked about having all the site plan conditions and any other conditions listed, not just referring back to whatever they were, but...
And one thing the board should know, there is a note on the plan that Mr. Casey put on regarding the landscaping and the God rail, that that will be completed by the present owner of the property.
Okay. So that would be on the...
Yeah, that is actually, it's too small on my screen to read.
Oh, it's on these actually now?
Yeah, it's, I believe it's on page two, or it may be on the cover. I can't read what's on my screen.
Not surprising. I can barely read them.
It's on the right-hand side at the bottom of a list.
Okay. Well, it's listed, so that's, that's good. And that's what we'd be asking for. Tom, you don't have anything to do with the condo documents. You don't?
No, I'm not a lawyer.
Okay, Mr. McDonough, are you...
Nor is the person I'm putting in the argument with it.
Okay, I'm going to ask.
Here's what I want to say.
Oh, okay.
We already have condo docs for Building 6. Sumner Callen wrote them. He was the person who split that building up and did all the work. And I believe the condo docs today are written by Phil Perry. And I think that there's, it's pretty much in the line with what we've always had. We've never had an issue.
Well, I think the issue is there's no name of the condo association. There's no, some of the basics that you need.
Mike, you understand, we can't put the horse front of the cart. We can't create a condo association till we know that this is going to happen. Well, I would just...
You can pick a name, can't you?
I guess we could. But if we were going to let the people that was going to do this with us, you know, pick and choose on what they're going to do.
Okay. Well, you do understand the hesitancy of town council to approve a document that's not recordable.
Okay. You know, I understand that. But I think that we shouldn't get so hung up on it because it's really not, I should say, if you make it a condition, I'm sure that Phil Perry and Callen Sumner will get it worked out because it's in the best interest of everybody to get it correct, if there's some kind of glitch in it. And if they need to put a name on it, I'm sure Mr. McDonough will stick a name on it.
Well, you'll need one for...
Well, I understand that.
County courthouse, they don't like no name.
I'm kind of surprised it doesn't have one right now, so.
Yeah.
But like I said, it's, it's a fluid moving target right now, so.
Sometimes you got to take aim and shoot.
I've been doing a lot of that. And I'm here again.
Okay.
Mike Coleman McDonough, Coleman McDonough again.
Go ahead, Mr. McDonough.
That's a really, I think that's a really minor issue. And by 8:30, I'll have a name. That's minuscule issue in that I'll have a name by 8:30 tomorrow morning.
Okay. I think we can handle this with a condition of having approved condo documents.
Do you need a motion to take jurisdiction with the conditions?
Didn't we already take jurisdiction?
You've already taken jurisdiction. It would be a motion for a conditional approval.
It would be a motion for approval is the next.
Motion for approval with the conditions.
I'll second it.
Do we have a good list of the conditions? That was my, thank you.
I have three, but I was going to say, for the next meeting, I could have the list of...
I don't need all the...
Existing?
Existing conditions. We, the condition of the vote would be that all existing conditions are listed individually. Is that working?
Actually, I have that on my list.
There were four that were mentioned. Do you want me to go through them?
Go ahead and state them.
Okay. So the first one was review of the condominium documents by town council.
How do we tighten that up? Because he could review them and not like them, and it still could meet the condition.
Review that the condominium documents are recordable and meet the Town of Newton's condominium document requirements.
Okay. Thank you.
Under zoning ordinance 33D and E. The roadway liability is put forth under subdivision regulation 8.2.4.
Yep.
The next one is that an ASBilt be supplied for the large building on 274. And then the last one would be that the conditions of approval from all previous site plan approvals be carried forward and listed on the notice of decision.
Okay.
I think that should cover it.
The one thing is on the floor plans, and I don't want to get in this anymore, other than because we don't have a document yet that has them numbered or lettered.
That can be, that can be another condition.
Can be included on the ASBilt drawings to be supplied. How's that?
You want them before the ASBilt drawing?
Yeah. So in the, well, one of the conditions is a, is that the recordable Mylar? Are we that far? Or where would that condition apply to, Jim?
That's a condition precedent.
I know, but on what, what, where do I have to see the numbering and lettering? Is it on the, are we talking the final plan, the recordable Mylar?
That was one of my questions, is which pages do you, does the planning board wish to have recorded?
Right.
Standard would be to record this page that is showing on the screen now.
I can't see it.
I think that's sheet four.
It takes two pages to cover the site.
Okay. So sheet four.
The standard would be to record this page, which I, I can't make out.
It's the one that shows all the buildings?
Right.
And the big building?
They will likely not allow that to be recorded.
And this, which is the other cut.
Okay, that's sheet five. Now, say again?
Sheet six, they won't allow it to be recorded.
Oh, sheet six. Yeah, we're, right now, we're talking about sheet four and five.
Right. Yeah, sheet six would not, would not be recorded.
Yeah. And sheet four and five would be, I believe that has all the notes, references. So that, back to the floor plan, would, numbering would be referenced on... Well, I didn't see it on both sheets, but definitely on sheet four.
On sheet four, yeah.
So all the notes that would, that you've asked for would need to be on those two pages?
Yes. And the, we're talking about the condition of the floor plan numbering required under the RSA would be as a minimum on sheet four. Just so we, they know where to put it. Does that make sense to you?
It makes sense to me.
Okay. You might be right, doing on both sheets, I'm not sure. Because right now, you have building numbers on the other sheet too. Okay.
Might I remind the applicant that you need to check with the assessing department for the numbering of your units?
The assessment department?
It's already done with 911 New Hampshire.
Okay.
We just did that whole thing in Chant about three weeks ago.
No, you have to go through the assessor, Andrea Louie, who actually will double-check and make sure that your numbers are in compliance with the assessing system.
Okay.
The assessor can get really...
Yeah. She's, she has a little sign-off sheet.
Yeah, she does, yeah, so.
Okay.
Please use the microphone.
Sorry, Annie. Yes, we will go down and we'll take care of the numbering with, we will also get the ASBilt. We'll make sure you have it Thursday, so it's in part of the whole thing.
Okay. And then one other thing we've been talking about, what, well, the condo, I'm trying to figure out what gets recorded. We don't have deeds because you're not selling anything yet. So clarify for me what, just the plan is what gets recorded, right?
Right.
The condo documents do.
You can have the notice of decision also recorded.
Yeah, okay. All right. So there's nothing to deliver back to us. What we require for a lot of things is when a deed is required, you got to bring a deed back to us so we can get to the assessors and all that kind of stuff. But that's, okay. Yes.
Standard is we record the Mylars. On the last condo, we recorded the Mylars, the condo docs, and the association bylaws.
Okay. I didn't know, I know those are recorded, I didn't, couldn't remember.
These are the only, the only two condo conversions that have been done in a long time.
All right. All right, so we have a motion and a second. And are we clear on the conditions?
Mm-hmm.
Are you clear on the conditions?
I have. Three, four, five, six. I have seven conditions.
Okay.
That's what I got, seven.
One of them will become very, very long because it will be a list of all the...
Yeah. So good luck fitting it on the... Oh, there's a lot of room here. Okay. Any further discussion from the board?
Nope.
Okay. Jim, call the roll, please.
Mr. Andrews?
Aye.
Mr. Lavoy?
Aye.
Mr. Moran?
Aye.
Ms. White?
Aye.
Ms. Collier?
Aye.
Mr. Foot?
Aye.
Mr. Mashon?
Aye.
And Mr. Lavoy. No, I got Ms. Lavoy, sorry. That's unanimous.
You get to say twice.
Yeah.
Okay. Unanimous, thank you. That's all here for this. I'm going to close the, that hearing at 8:27. You're done? Thank you. And...
Thank you.
Let's work on the good neighbor.
Right, exactly. All I want to say to the boards, thank you very much for the professionalism. Very appreciate it. Thank you. Good night.
Good night. Okay, moving along. The next one is Stephen Harrington of Newton, New Hampshire requests a public hearing for a conditional use permit, home-based business, overhead door sales and service at 8 Georges Way, Newton, New Hampshire. The property is referenced as tax map 7 block 3 lot 14-7. So Jen, first, as we try to figure out if it's complete, any comments on this one?
This does appear to be complete under your home-based, home occupation, home-based business. I will say, though, it does seem to qualify as a home occupation and not be a home-based business, given its minimal impact and office.
Uh-huh, yes.
It needs to be a home-based business in order for him to register.
Except it needs to be a home-based business for him to register his vehicles.
Did you have a chance to look at the application?
I did. It does seem to meet all of your home-based business requirements.
So it seems complete?
Yes.
Okay. Having heard that, and everybody hopefully have time to review, can I have a motion to accept jurisdiction?
I'm motion to accept.
Second.
Okay. Larry?
I'm sorry.
And call the roll, please.
Mr. Andrews?
Aye.
Mr. Lavoy?
Aye.
Ms. Collier?
Aye.
Mr. Foot?
Aye.
Mr. Moran?
Aye.
Ms. White?
Fellas, like...
Ms. White? Mr. Mashon?
Aye.
Unanimous of those who are voting.
That's unanimous.
Okay. That falls of technology.
Ah, yeah.
Okay, Mr. Harrington, I assume that's you. But start off, of course, state your name and then a brief description of what you're...
That's fine. Steve Harrington. It's just a home office. What I do is more mobile. I pick up product. I go to the job. Nothing stored at home. If it's going to go to that point, I'm going to rent the spot and start doing business out of there. The only reason why I'm doing this is for Google, you know, you got, Google wants you to put a business, you need an address. I don't have an address. I came from Mass. I'm now here. I'm just trying to set it back up. And if it gets to a point where I need to put product and I rent a shop. I used to have a shop before. I got rid of it because we just tried to pick up. It's cheaper to pick up from the job, you know, where I get it, product from. I'll pick it up and go right to the job. I'll schedule it like that. So pretty much what I do when I get home is I bill, write bills and emails, that's it.
All right, so I'm hearing basically...
I do park my car. I do have a vehicle. I drive to and from. Nothing big. I don't like seeing more than two cars out in my driveway myself, so there's nothing crazy going on over there.
Okay. So, go ahead.
Just to let you know, Ms. White appears to have lost her connection, if you wish to point, Mr. Zalinski is a voting member.
Oh, okay, thank you. Mr.... Mr., I'll appoint Mr. Zelinski as a voting member, now that we've lost Barbara.
All right.
Thanks. Okay. All right, so, I see you have hours typically. It sounds like this, this business is all self-contained, are there going to be any outward appearances, signs?
Not at the house, no. Basically, hours operations is hours on my phone, you know, it's not like people are going to come to the house, look at anything, there's nothing to look at. And like I said, when it comes to that point, I'll have a shop rented, so, then I'll transfer everything to there, being the address.
Okay.
The only thing in the letter, it says the materials are typically delivered to clients' homes, will there be any scenarios where it'll be delivered to yours?
No, because anything I'd be picking up would be heavy, you know, so, I just drive to the shop, load up, and then drive to their home, that's about it. If it's not delivered to them, I get it and go there. Nothing goes to the house, unless it's on the truck, it'll stay on the truck until the next morning, but I don't drive the bigger truck, I just take the little car home.
Okay.
I guess, for your convenience, is there a possibility in the next couple of years, so you don't have to come back here if you're getting deliveries?
Um, no.
Okay.
Are there any employees?
No, just me.
Jen, administrative question, on a scenario like this, do we need to have hours? I know Mr. Harrington has told us his hours.
You do not, I mean, you can include hours in your approval if you want to, given that it is a, I'm going to say a one-man show that's primarily using his own cellphone, it doesn't appear the hours are necessary, but you certainly could include them just to cover.
My thought in that scenario was to not, and the reason for that is, you know, it's your office, you might get a call at 7 o'clock at night, 8 o'clock at night, and I don't want to hear anything about, oh, it was outside of this person's hours, when it doesn't really matter, because we're talking about a home office here, essentially.
Yeah, so there's no, so there's not a landline for Harrington overhead, it's not going to be, it's just mobile, so it's my cellphone, it's no different than a regular call, and usually, I don't even answer my phone after a certain time, I'm home with the kids, so, I let them leave a message. Most of the emails, I'll get emails from a customer and say, hey, you know, we got this going on, I'll answer it.
All right, thank you. Any questions coming from the board? I'll open up to the public, are there any comments from anybody in the public?
Everybody left. Yeah, I felt like I was at one of those school recitals, you know, like you got to wait around for the last kid.
Yeah, you're not the last.
Yeah.
Okay.
I would like to approve it with the condition that if it surpasses anything outside the office, that he has to come back to the board.
Okay. Passes, anything, well, that's where I was getting at, because what, anything more than what we approve, he would have to come back.
Right.
So, that's where I'm trying to tighten up the, what the approval is.
So, this is just a suggestion that you approve that he may operate within the confines of the home-based business restrictions.
Yeah, the little checklist, I think, takes care of it, right?
Effectively, the checklist. It's anything under section, zoning ordinance, section 12.
That works for me.
So, that's the number of employees, that's the size of the vehicle, so...
Yeah, if anything changes...
I'd like to, I'd like to suggest that we not include hours of operation, just leave that out.
Yeah, yep, thank you.
Is that okay, Bob, for your motion? I'd like to second the motion.
We don't have a motion yet. So, did you make a motion?
You made a motion.
Yeah, Bob made a motion.
Made a motion to accept it with the condition of...
Okay, so how can, can we do this without having a condition? Of second?
Yes.
Well, you have two boilerplates for home-based business, and that is strip tank, all local and state permits.
Okay.
And no outside storage of materials.
So, no. So, no, we always, okay.
Those are...
Those are the boilerplate ones, okay.
Right.
Okay. So, the motion is to approve home-based business in accordance with section...
It's section 12.
Section 12 of the Newton zoning ordinance, with the following, with the two conditions.
Exactly.
Does that sound right? For you, is that good for you, Jim, you got that?
That's similar to what I will say.
Okay, does that work? Okay, we have that motion on the table, we have a second. Any further discussion?
Do we keep a listing of home-based businesses and neighborhoods? This would be like maybe the fourth one on that street? There's a gun store, hot tub, exterminator.
Is that, we don't keep a list, is that a good idea? I think it's a very good idea to have a list of all businesses in town. I'm not sure which entity would do that.
Yeah, the building department.
Do you know if they have a list like that?
I believe they do, or I believe he is working on it.
Okay, that would be good just for outreach, to, hey, businesses, what do you...
In town?
You need from us, what do you want, okay.
I will say, just generally, you're only allowed to have one home-based business per resident, so...
Per resident, yeah, residents, yeah, okay. Sorry, you're getting to listen to all this, but...
Hey, it is what it is. Yep.
All right, I have a motion in a second, no further discussion, Jim, call the roll, please.
Mr. Andrews?
Aye.
Mr. Lavoy?
Aye.
Ms. Collier?
Aye.
Mr. Foot?
Aye.
Mr. Moran?
Aye.
Mr. Mashon?
Aye.
Mr. Zelinski?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Okay, thank you. What I always tell folks, and I'm not sure how it will apply to you, but you do have the condition of all state, local permits.
Yeah.
I don't know if you have any, it's a very good idea to reach out to, as a minimum, the code enforcement, building inspector, I don't think he will have anything, and I usually say the fire chief.
No, I completely, not even, not even a door stored at my house, minus my own door, nor do I want to see anybody else's door at my house. That's why I try to schedule it, so if they call and say, hey, I need my door, I'll say, okay, you know, September 23rd, see you in the morning, I'll go pick it up, load it, go there, you know?
I would recommend at least talk to the building department, code enforcement, and he can clarify if there are, because we do not know what any permits may be, there probably aren't any, but...
I understand.
That's, that's in your court now to do that.
No, I completely understand. Like I said, if anything's going to start to get stored, it would be at a location, commercial location, that I rent.
Okay, very much.
I appreciate it, thanks, guys.
I'm good. Okay, I'll close the Harrington...
Thank you.
Hearing at 8:39. Okay, the next on the agenda, Melissa Hansen of Newton, New Hampshire requests a public hearing for a conditional use permit, home-based business, childcare at 88 South Main Street, Newton, New Hampshire. Property is referenced as Tax Map 13, Block 5, Lot 1, and Ms. Brown.
I do think that the application is complete, it does seem to qualify as a home-based business, and that's it.
That's it, okay. I agree with, with that, I didn't see anything out of ordinary, so if there's any questions, can I have a motion to accept jurisdiction?
I'll make a motion to accept jurisdiction.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion in a second.
Mr. Andrews?
Aye.
Mr. Lavoy?
Aye.
Ms. Collier?
Aye.
Mr. Foot?
Aye.
Mr. Moran?
Aye.
Mr. Mashon?
Aye.
Mr. Zelinski?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
That wasn't you. Okay. Don't have anything else there, so, Ms. Hansen?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, just for the record, state your name, and then you have the floor.
It's Melissa Hansen, I'm looking to legalize a home-based daycare, I've been a stay-at-home mom for 18 years, my kids are grown. Ever since the pandemic, I've been reached out by Kingston, Newton, surrounding communities to help out watch kids. I think it's a great opportunity, and I'm working with the state right now to get licensed, so this is the next step to come up, you know, upon you guys and get approval.
Okay. Is it a bunch of stuff you have to do with the state?
Absolutely.
And I know you're doing that?
Absolutely.
From our standpoint, does it meet home-based business? Seems to. Are you familiar, let's see, you saw the checklist, you checked everything off, so I'm assuming you read that and you understand that?
Absolutely.
And you, you don't have any issues with any of those?
Absolutely none, I, they told me this is the first step, then the next step will be going to the fire chief and the health board, then they'll come out, inspect the home, make sure everything's up to code, and I'm doing all the paperwork with the state, and that's pretty much it.
Okay.
I do have, sorry.
No, two things, first, is your hours of operation are six...
6:30 to 4:30.
Okay.
And I have two families that get dropped off at 6:30, so between 6:30 and like 9:30, they're all pretty much dropped off, so I have no issues with the driveway and backing out onto 108, because it's a very busy road.
Yeah.
So, everybody pretty much drops off and picks up at different times, so there's no cluster.
Okay.
And I have four kids that get picked up at my driveway for the school bus, both Memorial and Bakersfield.
I was just, I was just saying, we might want to extend the hours for the scenario that if you take on other clients that are going to have children picked up later, you don't have to come back to us and have to ask for a wider...
Like family?
Yeah, or maybe even like six, just in case something happens to our parent, something, they can't come get the child, this way, hey, you're in...
Okay.
Your timeframe, you know what I mean? It's not going to change anything.
Absolutely.
It would just keep you legit.
Perfect.
Yeah, we try to do that, because it, if you, whatever hours that we did, we would set, you can't go outside of those.
Okay.
And so, without it impacting, you know, it doesn't seem too much, we like to...
Nope, that works.
Bro, just, you know, you have that one kid that the parent is late or something.
Absolutely, I have, happens all the time.
And you mentioned the backing out onto the main road, that was my other question?
My yard, yep, it's fenced in.
And, but you've got a, you, like an extra parking, is that paved on?
Not yet, no, it's, that's why they did it in like, like dots, like lines. It's not completed yet, but it is for a turnaround, so as, they don't want to back out onto 108, they can back into that little spot and drive out.
That is like, that's something else I just wanted to clarify, because I feel like that would be a lot safer.
Yeah, because next door is the Gordon's garage, and sometimes they have cars parked out front, and when you back out, you can't always see.
Okay.
So, when you back out into that little spot, you can pull out, and it's a lot easier, and it's safer.
Great.
Yep.
I noticed the, the, you included the state questionnaire, I guess, sign-off, don't need verification. So, the limits on number of children?
Yes.
And we have to decide, do we want to put a limit on that, and if so, how many? And what is your feeling on the number of children you, I see what you currently have?
Yep.
Where do you picture it going?
The state allows me to have 12, but it's broken down per school age, preschool, and kids under 36 months. I'm totally comfortable with that, I do have a helper, and as long as I've been doing it, I've never had any issues.
Okay.
Yep.
So, you said the state limits you to 12?
Yep.
What way do they limit you? Is that a...
I, I'm allowed four kids under the age of 36 months, I'm allowed five school-aged, and I believe four preschool.
Okay, and is that limit based on you, the size of the house?
They just, it's in the, in the paperwork that the state gave me.
Okay.
Yeah, there are limits in state law and administrative rules about how many children at different age levels that you can have per people actually watching the children as well, as well as it being a home-based daycare. Yep.
Where I'm going with this is, do we want to be involved at all in stating how many children, or just leave this to the state? Because we don't have to put any limit.
Yeah, I don't think we can go against the state.
I think we ought to, sorry.
That do the, the Newton Learning Center, and it's per teacher, X amount of students, and we have to sign off by the state guidelines.
Okay. Annie, go ahead.
I was going to say, I'd rather leave off the number and, and let it be just per state regulations and licensing.
Okay.
Then, then she wouldn't have to come back to us if, if the RSA changed or something.
Yeah, I, I agree, I don't think we have the expertise to put a limit on the number of kids, and because this, we know this is a highly watched from the state, and I would just say that we, we don't need to put a limit on. Okay. Anybody from the public have a comment? Okay, I know you're smiling under that mask. I said, I know you're smiling under that mask. Thank you for wearing one, I need to wear mine more, okay.
I make a motion to accept with the, allowing her to improve her hours to, what, about 6 o'clock?
Yeah, we can do 6.
Yeah.
Second.
Let her do that, and I...
Okay, so the, it's not that long of an application, why can't I find things? Oh, there we go. So, the hours are going to be...
6:30 to 6:00.
Okay, does that work? That's enough?
Yep.
Okay.
Would you repeat them so that some of us can hear it?
So, the hours will be 6:30 a.m. to 6:00 p.m.?
And that's Monday through Friday?
Yes, yep.
Okay, Monday, thank you. I guess still the boilerplate conditions of permits, for the two we always have.
One difference is because this is a daycare, there might be toys in the yard. So, I would suggest dropping the no outdoor storage of any materials, because...
I do store them in the winter, so they don't get rid of...
I can't picture somebody having one of those little swing sets and dragging it inside every night.
Yeah, no.
So, then that would be a slight adjustment, and what, basically, are we saying that all business-related materials would be within the home or in the fenced-in, the boundary of the fenced-in yard?
So, I will say, having toys and a swing set in a yard is not outside of a typical residential use. I understand your kids are grown, so they may not be actively using it, but obviously, you can specify it, but it's not outside of a typical home use, so you may not need to specify it.
That's why I was suggesting just dropping that one, leaving...
So, we'd have to knock that one off the...
Yeah, just leave it with, obtain all state and local permits, which she's doing, and the hours of operation.
Okay. But we'd have to actually, I think, affirmatively state that removing item seven off of the checklist, which says no outside operation, storage, or display?
No, so you don't actually have the authority to knock something off?
Okay.
It's whether you're considering the toys absolutely separate from what a typical residential use would be.
Okay.
Just ask for variance, right?
Yeah.
So, how do we, I don't think that's necessary. Do we, I want to protect her, so do we need to have something in the, yes, Jim?
Mr. Chairman, would you ask for a motion to declare the, any toys or child-related items not to be materials as regards to storage outdoors?
I actually think you can just not even...
I actually think you can just not even list it out, to be honest. I don't think you need, I think she would still be protected because it's a residential, a typical residential use would, could involve toys.
Okay, what I am trying to avoid is the potential in the future of somebody complaining because there's a whole bunch of, for whatever reason, and they're basing the complaint on there's toys which are part of your business, and the home-based business says you can't have that.
It's vague. What's typical for me is probably not typical for Mike.
So what I'm trying to do is, is there something that we put in in the affirmative to keep that from happening? Does that ring a bell with anybody, or am I just blowing smoke?
Doesn't make sense. No, I get, I get what you're saying. So somebody can't say, why is she able to conduct her business the way she is with stuff outside, and I can't do the same thing? Right.
Yeah, what's a...
They're gonna say that we set a precedence.
Yeah, let's, store, think that one business is a, the swing set, Hot Wheels, or, I don't even know what kids do anymore.
I mean, it is fenced in. It's a star-gate fence. You can't see half of it, but I don't know if that matters.
Can we, can we make it a, one of the conditions that we stipulate that toys and play equipment are not considered the business equipment under the ordinance?
Can you request a variance? Can we just...
We can't do variance.
But could the applicant?
I don't want to send her to have to do anything like that, no. That's why I said all visible outside be within the fenced area.
That would be a much easier way of phrasing. If you want to have something in, I would phrase it that way, of keeping all toys within the fenced-in area.
That's good.
They're not allowed out front.
He can't see through the fence, right?
No. I mean, the only thing you can see is like the top of the swing set or the top of the umbrellas that includes where the toddlers play because they have a shaded area. Other than that, you can't see toys at all.
I think that's pretty typical for residents.
You can't see anything.
So what was the, what was the condition that we talked?
Mine, I was thinking, it just, everything has to stay within the fenced area.
Which it is anyways, it's too big to move.
I think that's fine, yeah.
Yeah, nothing's getting moved.
I have one suggestion, recognize children's toys are exempt from being considered business material. I don't really want to go down that road. Because then what's the next one? We're gonna try to exempt as business material? But I understand where it's going.
I completely agree with you. I can think back, it was the residents that wanted or started a pasta company, and they have a refrigerator on their deck, although I don't. People may have a freezer outside.
We used to live in Louisiana. We always had refrigerators on the decks.
I see where you're going.
Furniture, okay.
With the exemption, because then any, going forward, everybody's gonna ask for an exemption.
Okay. So the motion would be that all the...
At least the outback.
Business paraphernalia would be behind the, within the enclosed fenced area.
Absolutely, they're not allowed out front.
Good? Good enough? You want to go to bed?
That sounds good.
Okay.
Did we already go put it up to the public?
Yes.
We did.
Did I make a motion to approve the application stipulated on the one...
I thought we had one.
One condition? Oh, we did.
Maybe you made the motion.
I'm gonna make the motion.
Okay. I'll second.
Jim's still writing.
So do you have the wording of the motion and the conditions?
Yep.
Okay, and we still have the state, the standard one, the state and...
Contain, obtain all local and state permits. Our cooperation will be 6:30 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., Monday through Friday. And all business paraphernalia will be contained within the fenced area.
Okay. All right, thank you, everybody, for that. No further discussion. Jim, can you call the roll?
Mr. Andrews.
Aye.
Mr. Lavoy.
Aye.
Ms. Collier.
Aye.
Mr. Foote.
Aye.
Mr. Moran.
Aye.
Mr. Mashon.
Aye.
Mr. Zalinski.
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Okay.
Now, I have a question.
Okay.
When will I hear if it is approved so I can go in contact, like the fire chief or the health inspector?
Well, it is approved with that.
Oh, okay, okay. Thank you.
The notice of decision should be out on Thursday, provided my chair can come and sign it.
How about the vice chair? Sure.
Okay, because I will be, and it doesn't become actually official until I record it with the registry.
Perfect, just so if they ask.
You get a copy.
Okay.
And a copy would probably be good enough to start the further discussion.
Exactly.
Perfect, just so when they come back out, I have an answer for them.
And this is something I don't see too much, but the state, we have to sign off on this? The one, zoning verification?
Yes.
So I'll lead a clean one, and then, because I imagine you gotta, you have to take this to the state.
Yep, yep, I have one for the fire chief, you guys, the health inspector. I have all their forms.
All right.
You can actually instruct if you want so that Jim could sign a zoning verification.
Oh, yeah, individual authorized to sign it. I have a motion to allow Jim to sign the zoning verification letter.
I'll make a motion so that Mr. Doggett can sign the zoning verification letter.
Second. Okay. Jim, call the roll.
I could have just signed it when I went. I was just gonna say, I've been signing those right along.
Well, now we just made it legal.
Who seconded?
Me.
I'll thank Mr. Lavoy. Okay, Mr. Andrews.
Aye.
Mr. Lavoy.
Aye.
Ms. Collier.
Aye.
Mr. Foote.
Aye.
Mr. Moran. Mr. Mashon.
Aye.
Mr. Zalinski.
Aye.
Why do I feel like I'm missing somebody? Oh, that's unanimous.
Okay, thank you. So you should have, I guess by end of day Thursday, she would have the state documents signed, and then at least a copy of the letter of decision.
Right, as long as I get a clean copy.
Oh, yes. Do you have a clean copy?
Of that, no.
Okay. So he will need a clean copy of that zoning verification.
Okay, I'll drop it off.
Yeah, and you can coordinate with him. And you're already talking to all the other folks, so great.
I am.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Hey, I'll close that hearing at 8:59. Okay, on to board, business and correspondence. Motion to accept the new minutes, so that came out, I think, yesterday.
Yep.
Thank you, Annie, on that. To accept the new minutes from our last meeting, 8:10:21.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. No further discussion.
Just tell me who just... Thank you. Ms. Lavoy.
Ms. Lavoy, and I think Larry, Mr. Foote.
Thank you. Mr. Andrews.
Aye.
Ms. Collier.
Aye.
Mr. Lavoy.
Aye.
Mr. Foote.
Aye.
Mr. Moran.
Aye.
He's in the bathroom.
Oh. Mr. Zalinski.
Aye.
That is unanimous for the people.
That works for me. The next is the NEPA manifest for a total of $308.18. If I could, I have a motion for that amount, please.